Called meeting order, which allegiance wins? Win, you can please. Roll call?
Mayor Morris.
Here.
Mayor Proketa Rupertis.
Here.
Ottoman Green.
Here.
Ottoman Mandray.
Here.
Autumn Jones.
Here.
Autumn woman Hopman.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Uh, what we're gonna do today is, uh, just let everybody know. We've apparently had some terminologies mixed up. Uh, this will be our last workshop. So-called workshop, because workshops still have to be agendaized. We're, uh, we're gonna be calling them, uh, uh, town halls. The first meetings of every month now, because we want more of a free conversation, not as, not as, uh, formal. We want to, but there will still be order, uh, there will still be time limits and interruptions, uh, that will all still be, uh, honored during those meetings. Uh, what we're gonna do is, uh, I'm gonna hold off on the citizens', uh, comments till the end of the meeting. Uh, maybe we will be discussing some of the things for them. Uh, and, uh, we'll ask, uh, after we get through these items for discussion, we're gonna, I'll make some comments, council can make some comments, and then we'll have public make some comments. Uh, but other than that, I guess the first item for discussion is, uh, no action, or, uh, I'm sorry, Olson and Olson Attorneys at Law in General Counsel. We want to be considering them for, uh, to approve that come, uh, the eighteenth, the meeting of the eighteenth. Everybody know what to do. Uh, what this will be is in addition to Schwartz, uh, a legal team for the city. And we're looking at having it as an additional law firm. Any discussion?
Can I ask where this came from? What? Does this seem a lot more looking at?
Uh, we, we've looked at several, they, they had the best, because they're part of Limburger, um, right? They're part of Limburger Group, who we are also gonna be considering to do our, uh, collection and unpaid fines.
The ring was conservative, like a lot of the one we just checked, as far as their counsel. Hours, or hours.
Yeah, and, and we're able to, they're, they're just very responsive, they've been very responsive to us. We've heard some good things, some of the other cities that used to do. We've met with them several times and, uh, simply just some great people. Any other discussion? Uh, next item will be, uh, Blair and Sampson, I'm sorry, Limburger, Googan Blair and Sampson, L O P Attorney of Law to collect unpaid fines, fees, and court costs. Uh, just a little heads up, it's part of Limburger Group. They do, uh, a lot of the cities around here, uh, they will be assisting us in the warrants. Uh, the, the fees they charge does not cost the city anything to collect. They actually tack that on to the other end. So even if we collect it, we still be the same amount, whether they're collecting it or, or we collect it, we get the same amount. For traffic fines. This may.
How much in, um, unpaid warrants and fines do we have in total?
Last I knew, Brad, you helped me with this, what, wasn't it three, four hundred thousand?
Um, realistically, going back, uh, as far as we have record, there's probably as much as eight hundred thousand. However, a huge portion of that is uncollectible. So you're looking at about three to four hundred thousand max that is collectible. And that's just a rough, uh, assessment.
And, and this is something that we, we, we need to take care of.
Well, we still need to have a warrants, full-time or part-time warrants officer with this as well?
Actually, it would work better with this, uh, this, the, the, uh, Limburger is, is very good at, as far as their reputation, as, as far as getting better, uh, collection penetration. Um, but when you have, uh, folks that are not willing to work out, thankfully, the warrants have to be enforced, and that puts teeth into your entire program. If you did not arrest under the warrants and just had a collections agency, that's what we've been doing now, and, and it doesn't work, because people aren't worried about paying a warrant fee if you're not gonna come after them. If you have someone to come after them, then they will work with Limburger or anyone else for that matter to.
In, in that liaison, we will be our warrants officer.
Right.
That's what you're asking.
Now, I will say this, um, I do project that if we, in the next couple of years, if we get a lot of collections, uh, heavy penetration in there, uh, it, it would may very well be that, that council would consider whether we have the need to maintain that warrants officer once, uh, the big volume is addressed. By, um, just forecasting, I know it's very projected at this point, but I would say two years from now, um, that might not be necessary. So unless we have a major amount of this, major percentage of any complaints.
Thank you.
I agree with you. And this warrants officer also, uh, play double duty?
Yes, the government enforcement as well.
Yeah, government enforcement also. We are looking, we've got to, uh, nominate and get one alternate to Houston Galveston Area Council for the twenty twenty-two General Assembly. Anyone wanna nominate themselves? How about nominate the alternate?
Could you explain what this entails?
Uh, well, you basically go to meetings, uh, and you hear what other communities are doing. Um, you know, they, they like, they, they wanna have representation from all the communities in Galveston County.
When I went, they actually do give some grants and some, you know, the Houston area, Houston Galveston Area Council has grants that they give to cities for different things. So, I mean, it's a good thing to do, but I've been there, done that.
Yeah.
It's a good networking tool, too.
That's kind of, that's what I was, yeah.
And where they help?
Houston.
Yeah, in, in different places.
Each city hosts a meeting.
Yeah.
You know, like, I think we all went to one, and, um, it was, um, Texas City that hosted the one. So they held it at, by Bamar out there. So each city hosts one, it's, Jamaica Beach had hosted one, you probably haven't been to it.
We, you know, we, a- any of us can go to that. Um, we just need to have a designated person, and an alternate could be whoever else is going. I've made every one of them, even being as a mayor. I think Russell's made one, uh.
I made several.
Yeah. You know, so it's something that's, you know, you, it's everybody in Galveston, all the cities in Gal- Galveston County. And they bring staff and stuff like, last time we, we brought staff there.
It's normally informative, they have a speaker that comes and talks about various things, municipalities, different things that, you know, that their, each city's working on, and how they're networking, and how they're getting, getting help and everything, and everything. So it, it's, it's, like I said, it's informative to build on to represent the city to make a boost.
I mean, I will go keep going, I mean, I go to everyone that I can, but I don't, well, if I can be, then it doesn't matter. Yeah, it's usually the council person.
It's not that you necessarily have to attend everyone, but we just need to designate someone from our city.
Well, I'm not comfortable going over the causeway at night.
And most of the meetings are in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or someone.
Especially now when it's been winter.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be getting dark at five o'clock.
Yeah, I'm not, my driving is not good at night, so I.
Well, we'll make the nomination this afternoon. But we gotta do something before then.
This needs to be turned back in, um, by October twenty-ninth, so I can bring it back on the eighteenth, if you don't wanna interfere about it. It's just for discussion anyway.
Uh, update on the city website?
Okay, of course, we know you're all waiting patiently to get the new website, I've been hoping, um, we've all kind of participated, Brad and myself, and John, uh, in various meetings trying to get the website started. Uh, we're down to the, one of the last phases. We are actually having our Zoom, we've been actually gonna have our big Zoom hour, two hour and a half meeting, um, class on kind of learning how to maneuver around. It's our training session, um, on October the eleventh, at nine AM. Um, we're tentatively set to go live on October the twenty-fifth. We also still have some training on that at three o'clock, so we're hoping by the first of November, it'll be out where citizens can look at it. And hopefully we can get it, we've transferred over, they've got most of the stuff, so I've not actually seen it live to see what it looks like, but I see some mockups on this Sunday beginning. They look for the first of November, it'll be live, so hopefully it works, and it's all out there ready to go.
And at that time, I'm, uh, what I'm looking for is every one of us will have our age in there. Though we may not be able to enter our information directly, we may have to go through the, uh, the staff member here, but we can email them what we wanna say on there and put out there. And that way, we've got everything centralized, uh, on the website.
There's still gonna be some customization to be done, and some changes and things like that, so. We've paid our, we've paid our first year of, uh, the fee to get everything done, uh, sixty-eight hundred fifty dollars, which we all bring and everything, the annual, uh, from this point going, next year, it'll be seventeen hundred fifty dollars, any other additional things.
And then we're, you know, right now, we're kind of handicapped with the existing website.
Very handicapped.
Yeah, so we will be getting out a lot of information, like communication.
It'd be, yeah, it's, it's gonna be very, hopefully, if, if I believe the way it's gonna work, it'd be very transparent for the citizens, they can click, there's a box that's gonna say easy find, that there's departments and different things. So that it's gonna be very user-friendly, just click a button, click a box, and it's gonna be there, so.
And we'll also have on there, um, where someone can let, let us know if there's a stop sign, stop sign down, or things like that.
There's a warning box that's gonna go around, if there's a water outage out here on Jolly Roger, there'll be a box, you know, go to the website first to see what's going on, because we're gonna try to post everything there as fast as we can, so.
Any, any other discussion?
Just kind of give you an idea, kind of where we are on it.
The, um, contract with U S D M, we're gonna put that on hold, uh, in the communication, we're, um, what we're talking about today. Go ahead and let that, uh, go. We're gonna discuss that another time. Uh, closing out, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Well, this is October fourth, we're into our new budget, make careful, be patient with me, I'm putting up a budget to have, and get loans and hundreds together.
You did a great job.
So now we're into our fiscal, new fiscal year, so anything that's, that we had discussed about paying out of the budget last year, it needs to be done. You've got a thirty-day window to projects that, you know, they've given you, different things. I know Georgia's trying to get the pool refaced and restructured, whatever. So all of these things, you get thirty days.
You've got some city business finished though?
Anything that's to be paid on this last, this past year's, we had thirty days.
Um, Mayor, I do have some questions about the budget, and since I'm new at this, I have trusted my other city council members, because you guys are much more educated about the budget. And I want to say, Debbie, you've done a marvelous job in helping me to learn, but I have a lot more to learn. Um, um, and, um, I beg for your patience with some questions. Um, I know we have some county grant money that the city plans to use to pave certain streets, including Beachcomber. Um, but should we be looking to fix the drainage for the road before we start paving it?
No, no, we're, I don't think we budget any money for necessary, big drainage projects. These, some of the ones that we did budget for period over from last year, because a lot of the projects didn't get finished. Didn't get started. So those funds transferred a little, but there's not, I, I didn't budget anything for big drainage projects.
And can you tell me what, that, this might be hard for you, but maybe council members might go, what was budgeted before for drainage projects that didn't get from?
And you had to look at the budget?
From the report?
No, just look at, um, a sub-tune, look at your sub-tune, thank you.
I didn't bring a budget test, so, I mean, can you wanna meet with me tomorrow or something, ask me, and I can go back and look, because I haven't seen anything specifically earmarked as drainage.
Okay. Okay, so we need to clarify that, so, thank you. I will, I'll come and meet with you when I can, I'll let you know. Um, so there's no many.
What projects are you want, I mean, how much money are you talking for drainage, what are you, what projects are you?
Which fiscal year?
I mean, when you.
This fiscal year, last fiscal year?
Yeah, well, when you, when you look at.
That's when it gets confusing for me, because looking through the minutes, and I've spent a lot of time looking at last year's minutes, and with Sean, um, in his reports to the city council, he discussed lots of, lots of things, all of these yellow tabs here in these minutes talk about drainage. And so, um, so I'm really lost with where we stand for drainage plans for Beachcomber specifically.
Uh, we're nowhere, we're nowhere Beachcomber, because there's been a halt put on by the G O O until we get. Brad, you wanna elaborate on the, uh, um, where we're at with that?
Um, the emergency drainage plan is what I would, I would like to term that phrase, because it's obviously not gonna be something, uh, that is a, a long-term solution. But it does, or would assist in alleviating rainwater that is sitting on the roadway there. And that is to clean out the natural drainage area that goes, uh, through the dune system onto the beach. Beachcomber drains from north to south, which means it drains toward the beach.
That's what it was developed to do?
Yes.
When you and I met with G O O, she gave us the okay to go ahead and clear that opening, but since then, we've, there's been a stoppage to that, correct?
Yes, uh, in, in the, in the process, we have to submit, uh, two basic forms that anyone, any resident or anyone else has to submit. One of them is a beachfront construction certificate, and the second one is a dune protection permit. The city actually issues those, and the city is the first step in getting a permit to do this. Once that information is gained, any other information that they need, such as, uh, surveys of the area, uh, pic- before pictures, and then obviously after pictures, after the construction's done, you have to send those things in. Uh, any mitigation plan as far as, uh, changing the natural contour of the dunes, or whatever has to be included on that process. Um, I was informed by G O O that they receive, uh, one or more complaints from our residents stopping any plans that the city would have to remove that sand to allow for the drainage off of Beachcomber. We now have to supply a, a lot more in-depth mitigation plan, um, to get the G O O's approval to go ahead and do this emergency extraction of sand that would allow the street to drain toward the beach.
And since it's getting resurfaced anyway, we figure to, uh, wait till.
The road improvement project, which council has agreed to, and council has agreed to the, the level in which the road improvement project would be administered. Um, that project, we were, we were given a October startup date. The next, uh, step in that project is Anna and myself will be having a meeting with the county engineer's office as soon as they call for that meeting, and that's the pre-construction meeting. At the pre-construction meeting, we will be given the exact plan for that construction project, which areas are starting first, the time and action plan on those areas. Obviously, due to weather and other circumstances, sometimes that, that stuff gets changed up, but we will have a good footprint of where these projects are gonna start. I was informed that Beachcomber was gonna be either the first or second phase in the preliminary discussion. And, and that is, uh, Beachcomber, uh, was either first or second, and the other area was the Buccaneer and Jamaica Beach Road. So one of those two were originally planned as first or second phase, which means they would be the first to start. Um, when we do start the Beachcomber project with road drainage program, the street will be elevated somewhat. Okay, if we have eight inches of rain on it now, and it's elevated four inches, then that's gonna be, generally, you'll have four inches less water on the road. Uh, the road in that area, again, naturally drains to the beach, so there should be probably about an eight-inch differential between the north side of Beachcomber and the south point of the roads at Beachcomber, which means that, again, if we had a drainage system toward the beach, that would alleviate the bulk, or should, excuse me, alleviate the bulk of the street, uh, the water standing on the street. Now, when I say this is a temporary fix, an emergency fix, it is just that. Because the permanent fix would obviously be something like a covert place into where we want that drainage with flat piled on each side. And if we did that, though, even if we did that now, we would actually have to bring that into a lot larger project, because we would have to rebuild the, the dune system around where we're placing that cover. So in other words, we would, the city would have to bring in a whole bunch of sand, um, to the tune of, you know, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollar range for if that type of project is concerned. But, uh, but that would be more of a permanent solution, excuse me, more of a, 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 a permanent solution. Now, um, not the only solution, but if you raise the roads, and you're cleaning out that area, and you're pushing that sand back that's now accumulated around the roads and, and the sides of the roads, and then you did have some type of drainage to the beach, you know, how, how much water will you displace? It, it could be as much as ninety percent of the water that's there now, that I could do that. Um, but the, the next step in us getting permission to do that, G O O will have to give us permission. Right now, we're having to go a lot deeper in getting that permission, and it's gonna take a lot more time, uh, because some citizens are trying to block us from doing it. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, and I have a cup, a question, um, or a comment and a question. Last Friday, I was at Beachcomber after a small rainstorm, and, um, walking along the street to go and talk to my friend Bob. Um, nice to see you here tonight. I nearly fell, not even walking on an inch of water, there's a slimy, icky, gooey muck that lays on that street after a rainstorm. It's dangerous, if it's dangerous for me, we have senior citizens, many senior citizens who live there. Um, if it's dangerous for me to walk on, these twenty families cannot use that street after a rainstorm. And, um, is there a way that we can fast-track this and get it? They've been, they've been living with this since I, I think it's something we really need to set as a priority, and the city council, all of you old timers are aware of this, but I saw it firsthand.
Uh, this, you know, I don't know anything about slime, but I walked there, I was there right after the morning that it was hurricane blew in, we were flooded all over. I mean, we know it's a, a situation, we're trying to get it addressed, we have met, and we have talked, and we have visited, and so many times, it is almost top priority. But we now have another work block, and that's where we're at right now.
Can I help with the road block, can, how do we get over that? How can I help?
I would say he's, he is the liaison for streets and drainage, so go ahead, if you have a suggestion. Yes, sir.
Address that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, this is the point, to go ahead and do the, it's a temporary fix, it's not the solution. But it is an emergency situation, the very things that add is brought up. By doing this, it will eliminate some of the water in the street for now. The second step that I would foresee would be like a white paper, where we'll go in and look at all the different solutions, okay? Qualify each one and make a recommendation. That, that's the way I was headed with this. Uh, but we do need, and to do, e- even to get a temporary variance, so to speak, to go ahead and make some temporary, a temporary fix or drainage, we're gonna have to fill out some more forms and things. And, um, our operations manager is already addressing that, and she's working on that. So we're gonna try to get these forms in and go from there, but it's not the fix, it's just a temporary mitigation to help that part of the neighborhood. The second step would be to go ahead and, and do an honest, straightforward analysis, like a white paper. We'll list all the different suggestions we've had, we'll go in there and look at it, we'll visit the text doc, all the proper rights players that are involved, and then we'll make a recommendation.
And?
We do hear you, is what I'm saying, yeah.
And can we have, um, can I suggest more communication with Beachcomber owners? Polite communication, I've seen some emails from one member of our city staff that's not very polite to our citizens. So can we make sure that there's more communication?
And, and there is, but I can assure you, I mean, you, people complain to Facebook, and they sit and wait, and I think they're waiting for Facebook Maintenance Department to come out and fix their road. I, I, I'm not sure what they're, they should be open up dialogue to city staff.
It's, I have an email from, from, I have emails from citizens to city staff, nothing to do with Facebook.
They've been in these council chambers for over a year, since I've been in.
I'm sorry?
Or they, Beachcomber residents have been in here for over a year, being here two years, because we had pandemic last year, the year before, they brought this to council, I didn't know about it until then. So they've had open dialogue, and I don't think they're getting any communication back.
Okay, we, we've had this, the dr- the, uh, the road project done, and that's kind of what we were waiting on, and that's been delayed. You know, we, what are we gonna do, go in there, do a bunch of drainage work, and then have them come carry that up, because they're raising the road two, three, four, five, six inches?
Could we have a plan, because right now, there doesn't seem to be.
There, there is.
That's what we're gonna develop.
Yeah, and.
And the point being is that Beachcomber needs to be the last road, because we need time, a small amount of time, it shouldn't be a big deal, hopefully, to develop what needs to be done with it.
before we put the road in. And, you know, county commissioners involved with this, tech docs involved with this, GLOs involved with, who's it, I mean, us?
Yeah, us.
Yeah, us, but we gotta drive.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we're at.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
Deborah Taggart, 06916 Beach Comer. I just need to clarify some of the comments from previously made. I have been working on this type of story. I have sent emails to you, to Anna, just asking for help, okay? Just help. We we don't see anybody, we don't, nobody, nobody communicates. And I made a phone call to GLO. I did not make a complaint. I understand that she has told me in a separate conversation, Michelle Glover, that any time a citizen calls in to GLO, it is considered a complaint.
That's correct.
I called just trying to get some information because I don't get anything from you. I was at the last council meeting play, and you told me then, when I I spoke, that I would, I, you, I was here from you, and nobody has contacted you.
We spoke right after that.
No, I did not speak with you. I left before the council meeting was over, so no, you did not speak with me. I left before the council meeting was over.
And we have done, we, so you're saying there has been zero communication?
There has been, a nasty email from Brad Hyman to me.
And that's the only?
That's the only email I've had in two weeks.
And you don't even look through.
From anybody other than, I have communicated with Bill, I've communicated with Taz, I've sent emails to Marcy, and they've communicated with me, but a nasty email from-
And that's, but we will address that, but-
All I was asking for was help, and it was turned around that because I called the GLO looking for a solution, because I haven't gotten any solutions from the city in eleven years that I've lived there. I called the GLO, that's the first phone call I've made to GLO, that's in desperation. And I simply asked her, what, is there anything in the works for any drainage for Beach Comer? Because Brad Hyman told myself, Bob, Marilyn, and my husband the Monday before the storm that we weren't gonna like your solution, that they were gonna dig the dunes out again. Well, it's common knowledge to everybody in Beach Comer that any work that's been done on those dunes has not been permitted. And I called her, I said, is there a permit? Is there something in the works? Is this gonna happen one way or another? And she told me quite frankly, no, that she had walked the beach with you, with Brad, and I believe Russell, back in May, and had suggested to you in May that you start a permitting process on whatever drainage that you were gonna do, and that that it required mitigation. And she said that could not happen, and that she had followed up and had suggested that she had a plan that she put forward to you for some sort of drainage.
Yeah, yeah, no, we've never sued it back. But I can assure you, here, here's, here's where we're at. We, we know there's an issue over there. And how large that is, it's probably up to who you're asking, you know, it's some, it's a-
The people that live there.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. You ask somebody on the home away, it may not be a concern at all. But my point is, we're trying to project manage this. I apologize for the lack of communication. We do want to get a hold of that, and we're trying. We keep using the, to get the website up and running as an excuse, but it is factual. That is, but but that does not, that does not, you know, we, we gotta do a better job of emailing back and letting you know, letting you know. Now, here, here's what we're, we're trying to project manage this. It's not your job to project manage this.
But I have been, and I've made numerous suggestions, and everything-
Well, you haven't project managed it. Project manager means you're talking to the people that are are doing the work.
Nobody's doing that.
Yeah, okay, what I'm saying is-
Pardon me, these people are manning the pumps and doing the work.
That's doing the work. We have Bob, Sar, twelve times.
What I'm meaning is, what I'm meaning is, project management is getting it resolved.
Okay, who is responsible for that? Who is responsible?
Well, now that we've reorganized the city, it will be Anna. She's the operations manager, and that will be her job.
And I have had a conversation.
Yeah, and we, we're aware of it. But as, as my frustration is, with any government, it works too slow.
Eleven years is not too slow.
I don't know anything about eleven years. I'm, I'm worried. What I'm concerned with is since I've become city council member and now that I'm mayor, I'm trying to get it done correctly from that, that point forward. Okay, so I, I mean, I don't know how much you, you've complained about it or how big of an issue it is. How long have you owned there?
I've been there eleven years. The drainage issue started thirteen years ago with I, when the, the east-west road, which was Jamaica Beach Road, that, and there were homes to the south of that. When we lost that road and all those homes, we lost any semblance of drainage at all. And when we bought in two thousand and ten, we had not been here but a couple of months. And our street filled up with water, and it stood with water for two weeks. Now, I understand that there are numerous issues on this side, but most of your problems on this side is tidal flow, and at least it drains and has somewhere to go. Beach Comer has nowhere to go. When water stands for two weeks and you keep doing your driveway-
We've tried to address that by grating it back out the way it was designed by the developer to do. That's, that was what it was designed to do, that, that-
But you've done no dune mitigation when you do that, when you tear a dune stand on.
Or you're not tearing it down?
Yes, you do. When you take a box lane that's ten feet wide and run through there and level the dune with the street, then you have destroyed it ten foot, and I've got pictures. I, I mean, I, I'm not sure. If you want me with me and talk with me at this time-
We recognize that's not a solution.
But then what is, Gil, and I, I apologize to you because she spent two and a half hours at my house. And I appreciate that.
And I've been back over there two or three other times.
You know, but, but without some type of dune mitigation, when you, whatever you wanna call it, grade it, if you take down the sand from the end of the street out to the beach and don't mitigate anything, the first high tide, we're not dealing with rainwater, we're dealing with saltwater because it comes right through there. And, and we are the only, I believe, I haven't driven all of the streets, but we are the, we have a curb, okay? And the way our neighborhood was developed, the homes are all elevated above the street. And when we, it rains, the rainwater runs down into the street, it runs, and it stands.
Okay, but the developer didn't develop it to stand. The developer developed it to go towards the beach.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's what we're trying to get it back to.
But this is just a temporary fix. Then we look at, then we look at a more, a more logical, proper fix.
Well, I take-
By listing all of the thing, all the different-
Okay, I appreciate that, and that's the first time anyone has agreed to even think about engineering some type of drainage for us.
Well, let's say-
But we realize what you're saying about having a hole in the dunes, oh, that's not acceptable.
But, 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 but it, but it's the way it was designed, the way TLO has, has agreed for it to be, the way we have it at Buccaneer going up to the beach, there's a big hole. It's, it, it's, it's forty feet wide.
But there's also, there's also some drainage beachside over there. There are some drainage ditches that it might still-
That we have to continually maintain.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but we have nothing-
But there again, we, and and I don't know why that has not been graded out, but there again, that's what we're trying to get to. Since I've become mayor, I've made that a priority, but I'm trying to get caught up to what is going on, what has been done, what has been tried. And that's where we're at. And now, just when we think we're about to get ready to grade it, now we get a call and says we can't grade it.
I don't think you could ever grade it without a permit. According to Michelle Glover, you could never put a piece of-
But that was the next thing we were about to do, and now there, there's a holdup on that.
Well, according to her, there is no complaint process. It's simply, you need to get a permit to do whatever it is you're gonna do, and you need to mitigate whatever you do to keep from having the ocean come back into our street.
Okay, okay, and that's what I'm saying. We were not going to tackle that until we got the road graded, until the, the new resurfacing got done. Because that, it just has to be destroyed again. You know, it's, we wanna get, we wanna get the road, the new road put in, then we were gonna grade it out. I mean, it, it was pretty simple. And if that hadn't been explained to you, I am, I am, I'm very sorry about that. I, I failed on that, and and I'll, I'll try to do a better job.
Okay, I sent an email to Brad last week asking for help with, with pumping, okay? We got the nasty email, or I got the nasty email that said we couldn't do that anymore. I picked up the phone and called, let me finish, Michelle, and she said, well, she says, let me see what I can do. We understand you're underwater, and we can probably get you some emergency authorization to pump that water back to the beach. And she says, but that will have to be coordinated and approved by the city of Jamaica Beach. I have not heard word from anybody. Water's still standing there, and we can't get in and out. My question to you is, we, myself, my husband, Larry, Bob, Mason, I'm sorry, we've all manned the pump, and you know that, okay? You know we have a pump. That's not a mystery to anybody, but the, the city paid for it. And we've manned that pump with the understanding that there was gonna be some drainage engineered in with the street project, and that, I don't know who dropped the ball, why that didn't happen, but do you have any idea how it feels to be so betrayed when we are told over and over, if you will do, we were told, excuse me, in December, if you will do this, we will get you some engineer drainage in here with the street project. We have diligently pumped, had not called on the city, hadn't asked, hadn't asked you to pay for gas, hadn't asked for any manpower. We've just gotten out there and done it. And at the end, Bob, you pumped twelve times during the summer?
Yeah, one time was twelve hours in a day.
Okay, and we haven't asked for gasoline, we haven't asked for any reimbursement of labor. We've done it because we thought there was going to be a solution with the road project. And it, there's no communication, no, and I brought it up at the, in the May meeting after you were elected, and have you called me? Have you called Bob Sar, Larry?
I don't, I don't have their number, they have never contacted me. Yes, you, I have, I have spoke to.
And I met with Brad, Marilyn and Brad, or Marilyn, myself, and Mason met with Brad in the spring, I'm not sure when it was, in his office. And he communicated to us in the spring that there would be some engineering, engineered drainage done with the road project. And so-
So you know for a fact that has not been done, or has been done?
I don't know, because nobody's communicated with me.
We, we will get, we will get back to you on that. It's first for me to hear about that, but the one thing I'll say, you kind of lazed over it about the pumping back to the beach. We were told not to do that.
She told me that she would contact, I'm not sure who she contacted.
Okay.
I asked her to contact you back.
No one, I have not been notified that she, or notified anybody on staff?
I called and talked to Michelle Glover with the GLO to confirm what she just said, and Michelle Glover confirms that.
So who did they call to?
She said that, let me look at my notes. These are the notes I took while talking to Michelle Glover. And she said that, um, and she informed Brad and the mayor about the process last week.
Yeah, yeah, yes. The, the process of grading it out, not of pumping the water, straight water back to the-
And that there, there was a possible, there was an emergency process for, for pumping the water. They would do, that you could get an emergency permit for, for pumping the water to the-
Emergency permission.
Permission, thank you. And also that she and Sean had a alternative, had a plan to install a culvert with a valve way last year, a year ago.
And wasn't it done at some point, Russell, and it got filled up?
No, it was not done. It was discussed, and it was met with an objective opinions and cabash.
Okay.
Who's, excuse me, Russell, who's objective?
Your neighbors, I believe you were in that meeting. We had engineers in here talking to everybody in Beach Comer.
Ask you?
It was before that.
It was before the pandemic.
Yes.
We brought engineers in to discuss these projects with the residents of Beach Comer two, three years ago, three, four years ago, we'd been working on this. And residents of Beach Comer, excuse me, said, no, they do not like that idea. They didn't believe that the engineers' processes, ideas would work, and they didn't want to afford it.
Pardon me, can you give me names? Because we've got one, two, three, four, five, six of us here.
Yeah, there was nobody that's in here tonight.
Pardon me, this, Michelle, what she's talking about was last year, that she and Sean came up with the plan. And plan, and Sean mentions it.
That's what we've been waiting on.
Sean mentions it in some of his, in his city administrator reports last year. And so this is, we're not talking three, four years ago, we're just talking a year ago.
When you started with the-
For clarity on that, but that did happen. There were engineers in here, that was before Sean came up with that plan with Michelle. And the concern, I don't, I didn't take it as they didn't want it. The concern was to make sure that it was thoroughly evaluated because there was manpower needed to keep the the inflow, intake of the valve clean, because it's gonna be constantly full of debris. At that point, we didn't have a city worker to keep it clean.
Okay, well, I was not a part of that meeting, so I don't know when that meeting occurred, but I was not a part of it, and, or any of you.
My point to all this-
We actually had, had planned to get new dunes through the GLO a long time ago, but then with all these subsequent storms, that has never taken place. We had permits, we had ready to go, and then it, it went away. I mean, it's like, we get a permit, I mean, we get, we do everything they say, and then move the carrier just a little bit further. They go, no, you've gotta have permission of all the beachfront owners or whatever.
I understand. That's a dune project.
Well, that's, what it, it's gotta be done in, it's, it's, it's gotta be done at the same time.
I spoke with the engineer of the dune project, like, and-
A dune project is like a roller coaster, and that's what I think was the goal.
If you put those things through there, without taking the stuff over, it's gonna be like those-
I guess, I guess what, what I mean, what the positive outcome in all of this would be is that you, as a council, are dedicated to looking at finding a solution, funding it, and communicating with us. And I'm just not real sure that that's not, is that too much to ask?
Uh, no, no, not, not at all. And we, we are, we have made the necessary changes here at city to, to address those things. And I apologize, we're gonna, we're gonna be getting better at that.
But it's not like we haven't been trying. We've been trying ever since.
That's, that's the derogatory that we get, is that like we haven't been working on it. Well, you see, right there's four or five years worth of trying to figure out the best solution.
It's been more than that, but there's, no matter- It's been more than that. But there's, no matter what the best solution.
Been more than that?
I don't know what, because we've never, nothing has ever been communicated to us as a solution.
Okay, but there again, it has been communicated to some, 'cause apparently, as y'all said, y'all were not in that meeting, but yet there was a group of y'all here in the meeting with engineers a few years ago.
Well, if, if we were not notified that you were having a meeting, we would.
I, I don't know about that was, oh, BC, they call it before.
All I, all I would want is moving forward, that we have a commitment from this council to address our issues.
You have that.
Secondly, we need some manpower to get the water out of our streets until you come up with a, with a solution.
Well, the solution would be for us to grade it out and get.
No, I'm talking about today. Somebody needs to be, to commit.
Today, because now our hands are tied till we.
Absolutely not, and I would, I would.
Man, man, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm going by what we have to deal with right this second. We cannot do anything because of the.
Have you spoke with Michelle Clover?
Uh, no, but the staff has. Go ahead, Brad. Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll go there.
Cause, but you.
I have a question to you. Have you spoke with Michelle Clover since Friday?
Yes.
Thank you.
Several times. And I wanted to clear up a few things. The, with the GLO right now, and when I said an emergency fix, and I'm gonna clear up something with the Sean thing that was brought up. Last year, Sean made a, an executive decision that I understand and actually support, even though it was a violation of GLO rule. He got tired of the situation. He took the matter in his own hands and dredged that natural drain out without getting.
Without permission.
Without getting permission. Now, once that happened, there, that was the violation. It was the city's right to maintain that drain after that. We didn't do that because of a lot of conditions. Okay? COVID, the, all the tropical storms that did the damage. Obviously, during those situations, there's two flows there. We do want a dune system in place in the case of a storm, to not have the surge cause flooding. And we also have the other problem of the rainfall flooding. Now, as far as the engineering, uh, that was said, that there was engineering process, there is engineering, or you wouldn't be getting the road improvement project. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in engineering. So yes, there's a lot of engineering, and yes, part of that engineering, even though it's a street improvement project, that street improvement project, as we had earlier said, will address some of the natural drainage issues in the subdivision, but it has to be aided by a drain out into the beach. With the pumping issue, when the pump was presented to you guys as a solution, again, Sean did this without getting permission from the GLO. Before you pump water from your subdivision onto the beach, on a routine basis, not talking about a tropical storm, on a routine basis, you have to get a beachfront construction certificate and a dune protection permit and a mitigation plan for dune protection. That was never done. So, the first drain out and the pumping were both against GLO rules. Michelle Clover, Clover and myself have, uh, reached what is permissible and what is not permissible, and what the city is doing right now is we're going back through the permit process, but with the complaint that was lodged, and I'm here, who lodged the complaint or made the call, we have to add a total mitigation survey and report before, before they give us permission to do that, and it may or may not be granted. The permanent, or more permanent solution would be placing the culvert through that dune system and not just dredging it out. Because when you do that, you can't just put a culvert out in the open. You actually have to build the dune around that culvert. So that is a lot more involved. To, um, Alderman Green's point, somewhere around eight to nine years ago, there was an official plan and surveys and engineering done for dune replenishment for Jamaica Beach, and this was post IC. In that, we went through, approximately a year ago, we got a permission from the United States Army Corps of Engineers that gave us, they actually granted the permit for us to go to the next phase on the dune replenishment project. Now, once they posted that, there were, and I, I, I don't wanna guess, but there were a, a vast number of ecological groups and environmental groups that followed injunctions against the city for doing any dune replenishment because of a thousand different reasons. If you would go down to the west side of Galveston right now, where they're dredging and building the beach on the seawall, that's the same methodology that we were gonna rebuild the dunes. We do the, the drainage from the sand reserves, it gets pumped onto our beach. There's not trucks, fifty trucks driving beach-grade sand back and forth, doing further damage. But that, that process has stopped. Like Alderman Green has said, it stops, it starts, and it stops, and it starts, and somebody else files, and they have to work through that. We have a third-party consulting firm that's been working with us for years on this project.
Who is the third party?
I, I would, I would give you the information. I don't have it available for, for you right now. Col, Colm Resnick is the, the third-party company they've been with, working in this project. They're appointed by GLO, FEMA, and everything else. Uh, the city's not able to pay for them. They're, they're, they're part of the grant program that would pay for this. The only thing that the city would have to actually pay.
Reparation, the, the, uh, dune refurbishment grant.
Yes, sir. The only thing the city would be obligated to pay on that are the beach walkovers, and that was the tune of about a hundred and three thousand dollars that you guys approved years ago, and I don't know how many years ago, 'cause I don't have that information. Okay, that can't go forward, because once you get permit from that, from GLO, you have a year to store the project. We can't get that permission right now, because if we got permission today, we might not get the further permission for another year for the dune replenishment. So, so there's a lot of things working. There's a whole lot of stuff that the city's been involved in, and their hands are tied as to some of what they can do. Um, Jamaica Cove, one of the flooding areas. There was a survey done, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to lift it six inches. Well, without actually going forward with a bond program to where, uh, you can actually finance some of this stuff, uh, you're looking at probably four, five hundred thousand minimum for the Beachcomber project. So you got a million and a half dollars the city doesn't have, so you'd have to do some alternative program like a, a, a bond election. And I have a feeling that would probably not be successful. It's just, uh, just a guess. But I don't think people that live outside of Beachcomber or on Jamaica Cove will probably wanna pay a lot more for the taxes, so your streets could be lifted. So it's not an easy fix by any means. But I've heard a lot of people say, what are we gonna do about it? Guess what? We are everybody in this room. We got citizens, and we got the governing body. And if anybody can come up with the solution, God, we need it. And, and we care about.
Somebody that can shovel.
Okay. So, with the pumping issue, now, with all this stuff is in highlight, because this is a state agency, now that it's, it's come to their attention that we are needed to do some stuff, and they're wanting permits for everything, including pumping of water. Because, yes, you're right. Based on the information that you gave, Michelle, she's gonna answer based on that information, not all of the information. And the information is simply this, if you change the natural contour of the sand, you have to have permission to do that. Because you're affecting aquatic life, you're affecting turtle nesting, you're affecting sand crab, you're affecting everything. Uh, we have an expert that could probably give us the, the, the ills of when you move sand around. So, guys, it's, it's not an easy solution, but I, I will say this, it's, it's time to stop doing the total war thing and getting together to try to find the best solution now, while we're researching permanent solutions going forward.
Yeah. Brad, I have a question, Brad.
Yes.
In your conversation with her, after my conversation with her and Roddy, because she did tell me that she was going to notify you that we had permission to pump in an emergency situation.
She said with our approval.
With your approval.
And, and, and when I mentioned that, yes, but there was never permit, she said she got, you have to get a permit from us first. Because this does not, a, when you, when you're doing it twelve times in a year, that's not an emergency. That is routine maintenance. And you have to have a beachfront construction certificate, and you have to have a dune protection permit, and any attached or related mitigation plans. That's what you have to have. If you doubt me, call her and Marcy'll tell.
Absolutely. It's emergency twelve times a year, you know?
Well, that's, that's, again, that's not considered emergency. That's a summer. That, that, that would be.
What would constitute an emergency if there were eight inches of water in front of your driveway and you couldn't get in and out? Would that constitute an emergency, or any of you? Marcy, you, you spoke to me, and, and you, you were concerned when you couldn't get to work one day. And, and so, it's, what constitutes an emergency with this council when you have citizens that have, do not have access to their homes because of floodwater?
And that's what I'm saying. We, we're, that's an easy fix, in, in my book, since I've been made aware of this. It's graded out to the beach. We have, we have permission to do that.
I don't believe so.
Any, any other, any other questions? No, I'm, I'm just trying to say, that, that gets rid of the eight inches of water. I mean, that, that's done it over, but, but now our hands are tied with that. But, uh, go, go ahead.
Okay, I'm confused with this new head of department thing now. Anna is taking care of permits, but then Brad, which, who is responsible for this project? I'm not clear.
I'll, I'll go to your side. Uh, Anna's new position has never followed these type of forms together. I'm gonna be assisting her in, in putting this stuff together to send in. After she knows how to do it, then it would be her responsibility to do it going forward.
Thank you. And can I suggest that Anna, you start, since you're learning all this process, that you start, um, with open communication with these people. Even if you choose one person, plus the street laners on and the mayor, and so that way more people have an understanding of what the process and what's going on. Would that be possible?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's where I'm, that's what I'm saying. I think where we're at now, the person in charge at city administrator position is not overwhelmed or overburdened. Now, everybody's getting settled. I mean, it's only been less, right about a month, everybody's getting settled into their new positions. Now, we're learning to work our, our new jobs. And this, these, just of what they went through, and the lack of communication is unacceptable. Uh, eh, w- w- we're gonna get past that. You know, we're now, sh, you know, i- if it was, you had a city administrator, he's got forty emails, plus the city business he's doing any, any given day he's having to deal with. And it just becomes overwhelming. I mean, you gotta have a little compassion for that position. But I think we've made the right moves now, spreading all of those tasks into three different positions. Now we can start, if somebody has a complaint or has an issue that, that administrator can get on top of.
Okay, so we need to find who has responsibilities and accountabilities for head of department.
Thank you, and that leads right into my next, uh, thing that, you, you just lead me right in. Uh, is, is, is getting our SOPs together, and, and, uh, we're gonna be working on that for our November. Before the end of the year, we're gonna have that completely done. Is, is, ma'am?
I wasn't done with the fiscal year. I found my paper that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, go ahead.
So, uh, during the pandemic, in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, uh, project name, drainage improvement, major of diversionary ditch, thirty-five thousand dollars was approved and approved by council as a priority to still get done, even though the city was limiting the, the funds expended on multiple things. So he sat there and talked about which trees we were leaving behind. So this was approved and needs to be done. So, are we not doing that anymore? We got thirty days to get it done, right? Where's this done?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm, where, where are you looking at?
Our line out. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one capital investment planning information. It had a street project, bulkhead improvements, beach improvements, drainage improvements, the technology that we finally decided to work on, the video equipment in, in here, facility improvements, Russell had asked for the spray liner in the fire department, did we approve that? Ventilation, DMS stair, all that kind of stuff. Um, and then some other ones that we'd never approved about buying like backhoes and mowers. Oh, I think we did that more. But, um, uh, the water project was the last thing on here, so it even, it goes down to where it's at in the budget, and it's, you know, currently in the budget, the spray foam for the apartment, thirteen five. So, I'm just wondering, like, this stuff we approved and we're ready to go on, what, what happened to it?
Um, we're gonna get it taken care of. And, and like I said, if we didn't get it taken care of that year, it will pass through to the following year.
But if we already budgeted that money, I wanna make sure that money doesn't go away. Those dishes are not getting any cleaner.
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, but the, it's gonna be a lot more than thirty-five thousand indoor ditches.
How did you title that? Didn't you title it main diversionary ditch?
Clean remainder of diversionary ditch.
Yeah, and that was the main ditch going through the center of the, of the community.
Right, some of it was started, and some of it was not.
And it needs to be completed. I mean, I'm a complete fan of that.
It was cleaning the culverts on Buccaneer and Jolly Roger. That's thirty-five thousand, and so, ground liner in the diversionary ditch, which was in the budget in line one, three, zero, one, four, and then dredging the Weyyipoa for.
Okay, and, and this is a prime example of inefficiency of the way the city was made last year and the years before. There's no reason this shouldn't have been done. Now, with the way we got it, I think we've, we're headed in our direction, but we need to get those things higher priority with our existing staff. I think that's, that's, and we're, we're going that way.
Well, we're literally sinking by this going year after year, by our ditches being thicker and thicker, 'cause the cost is going up. Had you got it done, when the ditch was better, the cost would have been what we budgeted for.
And, and the staff members that were, that were in charge of that are no longer with us.
Remember, this paper didn't go away?
I haven't even seen that.
Yeah, I haven't seen this.
I haven't seen it anywhere. So I don't have a clue what I need.
Could we get a copy of that?
I mean, all, all accounts of that, I didn't just make it up.
I'm new. I'm not getting to see it.
And it was from twenty to twenty-one.
Twenty to twenty-one.
If I have a small comment.
I've got, uh, Buccaneer Ditch is getting loaded on Wednesday. They should begin on that on Wednesdays. On Wednesday, and, uh, as far as Jolly Roger right now, it is too wet, so we're not able to get in here.
But I think this was cleaning out those culverts, the concrete culverts.
Yes.
Uh, that's, they have to dry.
We're, great. Wait, we're gonna do it?
We, I'm getting some.
If, if it dries up.
Which, which, hang on, Marcy's meaning the actual big main diversionary ditch.
Well, no, that, that was thirty-five, and then thirty-five for Buccaneer and Jolly Roger.
Buccaneer and Jolly.
The concrete one.
We're talking seventy thousand.
Yeah.
The, the Buccaneer and Jolly Rogers for the street improvement project.
Oh.
So that's being addressed there.
I mean, we're gonna say.
Uh, the diversionary ditch.
The diversionary ditch is... Anna's already got somebody contracted, ready to go. The water's gotta go. And that's not just cleaning out culverts. That's cleaning out all the vegetation too that's causing a lot of...
Well, we had a concerned citizen that we addressed that we wanted to leave the palm trees. Anything bigger than... Smaller than palm tree was gonna go. The palm trees are staying. Okay. Long as we're on the same page. If anybody else might pay for your log to it. We make copies. Get wild.
One thing, Anna, could you take a look at all these different projects and things and give us our recommendation on priorities?
I'd have to have a list of what all the options are.
Yeah, make a list of all the different ones and then take a quick look.
And that's why we're having these meetings.
And then get back to Clay and the council members that have liaison responsibilities for those things. Just give us your take on what you think the priorities should be so we can get lined up and a party agreement.
Well, why don't we do this the next meeting on the first of the month? Why don't we set up a new priority? Just get all the projects together and prioritize them ourselves.
Well, let her give us a shot.
Well, she's new in the position. We live here all the time. We know.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying let her give us her take. Then she knows of the projects.
Yeah, I mean, we did this before and it didn't go very far, but I'm... We're new.
But she got a different drive here now.
Yes, exactly. We do drivers.
Drivers, so we'll let them do it.
Yeah. Anything else, guys, with that?
Thank you for the update on that question, Debbie.
Where are we at?
Number seven.
Seven. Updates on personnel issues. I'll be extremely brief with this. I just wanted to make an announcement. Lieutenant and Assistant Chief Oakland has resigned from our department. And his last day will be fourteen of this month. And we're gonna miss him. He's been my right hand for seven years and a fantastic part of this community. And it's... The hours, his position, as far as lieutenant, is not being addressed right now. We have two sergeants that are working. I think the command staff has got enough rank level right now and we'll work that as we go. We were fortunate enough to hire back Jeff Pettah, who is one of our... One of the best officers that's worked here for a long time. Is back feeling at forty-hour position. So, the staffing is at a hundred percent. So, that's all I have. Okay. Anna, you want to talk about the Blackbeard Loop Station? Was it about personnel?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
My hall, because I was unable to attend last month. Would you give the positions that now exist? Yeah. Instead of a city administrator, what positions do we have here?
Oh, we divided that up. Yeah, we have basically the business administrator, which is also the city secretary.
Which Debbie, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we have a city operations director, which is Anna. And then we have the chief of police and public safety director, which is Brad.
So, there's only three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we opened our formal bidding procedure. Unfortunately, we only had one person turn on that bid. It is Matula and Matula Construction. They came in at one sixteen, right at one sixteen six.
So, one sixteen is valid?
I am gonna present it to council in the next meeting for approval. We do have the recommendation from our engineers to go ahead and use them. I wanna keep... We got the ball rolling and I wanna keep it with that momentum. I wanna continue to finish the projects that we were doing. And as y'all well know, our infrastructure with our water treatment plant, you know, it's getting older and it's needing more and more work. I feel that if we address the Blackbeard Loop Station, which, you know, we're already halfway through the project with all the bidding procedures, it will just benefit us just that much more.
Any questions for me?
Yes, what time we budget to that project?
It's under budget.
One fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, she's still up. Okay.
Unfortunately, during the... We combined the Blackbeard and the bulkhead for formal bidding procedure. And unfortunately, nobody showed up for our formal procedure on the bulkhead. However, I did receive a bid... Today, I received this bid today from Gulf Coast Marine Construction. They... And indeed, that we already made every effort to be fair and set it out to formal bidding procedures. We are able to take a bid like this that comes in like this. They came in at, right at almost one oh five, a few hundred dollars shy of one oh five to go ahead and fix that bulkhead that's also lining the water treatment plant. I am gonna bring it to you to you on the next meeting for approval. And this one as well came slightly under budget. I believe we approved one ten and this is at right at one oh five, but we're still under budget.
Do they give a linear footage price on that bid?
I don't... No. No, I don't believe so. I can request it and have it ready for you for the next meeting.
Please have a look.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Debbie, have you anything on...
I'm just gonna kind of let you on the process of where we are on the new STR program. We've had our initial one call meeting. She's got... I laid it out in that I gave you all to kind of see the process. Noah and George and I all were on the call and she asked for other documentation from us. She wanted to text us a list of all the houses in the city, which I turned in sixteen hundred and thirty-four residences out here. Now, we're in the process of trying to get together our template for the letters and the different things it's gonna be. They will put it together and put it on the website. We're gonna try to set it there. You'll have STR, you'll have the three boxes. You'll register, you'll pay, and all that. We have our second call tomorrow at two o'clock to go over what we've turned in to her and see what our next process is. But as you can look through there, and just, you know, they came in at thirteen thousand. I want to think we actually did budget it fifteen some more. And it looks like hopefully by the first of the year, and then in the B C, we're just gonna be ready to go. So, definitely by the first of the year, we can have this process in place. I just heard initial... I guess looking over the city, she's found two hundred and sixty rent students that have rentals in the cities that she's coming in. So, like I said, I gather that. They're getting their documentation to give it and doing all the research to get back to us about it. So, as soon as I know more, I'll let you guys know. Just kind of with you and I think we are working on it.
Yes.
She found two hundred and sixty short-term rentals?
That's what she said in her report, her initial report.
And how many are paying? Do you remember how many are paying?
Two something that Noah gave me. I mean, I gave it to y'all last night.
Yeah, I remember that I asked for it with the O R R. I just wondered if it was off the top of your head and you remember. Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a question on the short-term listing. Couple of years ago, I didn't know or asking for that information. What I received, we have short-term rentals, but we don't really issue them company. And it was listed in the reporting that I got as a lump sum payment from Sand and Sea. And it did not break out how many actual properties the management companies are paying because they pay our high tax fees. So, is that a breakdown of...
Some of those that come in from Sand and Sea, they will list the different resident or the addresses. Not all of them.
Well, I know there are several different management companies and it seemed like they were all linked together with just like a lump sum payment. So, I couldn't come up with an actual number of how many short-term rentals we had based on the fact that the payments were made as a one check for five or six different properties.
Noah, she... I think she keeps more better records on that as how many per se.
I just wondered if those numbers were actually being cashed.
It was less... I wouldn't think ours was less than two sixty. If I remember correctly.
About two hundred and twenty-one.
Two, what was it?
Two twenty-one.
Yeah, something like that. I knew it was less.
Thank you. Just...
It's a learning process. We'll figure it out as we go.
Ginger Jabs, one six six one two curly. I was just wondering how... What's going on with the lawyer in the short-term rental paperwork that we turned in to him? I was on that committee and would like to know what's going on.
We're gonna tackle all of that at the same time with this new host company, the registration, and doing this all at the same time.
But has the lawyer approved or...
He approved it.
Yes, oh, yes, ma'am.
He approved it back. It was our meeting that we approved it.
Yeah, I would say it was... Yeah, a couple of meetings ago.
So, then this group that you hired will send out information or they'll have it here at City Hall or...
Which information?
Well, about people when they come in and they have...
That's what we're working on now. We've had our initial first call with this company. So, then she's... We're trying to get together the template that we're gonna put out. We're wanting to be as much in control of it as we can as far as setting the letters, the notices, and how we're gonna put it on the website for the...
There will be links on our website that go directly to the portal to be able to register and thing. Yeah, like I said, this new website's gonna have a lot of information. Yes, ma'am.
Will it still be posted in the individual rooms?
Will it still be...
The committee had come up with the priorities that needed to be posted. Like, what day is garbage?
Yeah, yes.
You know, not one at a time.
Yeah, all that will be included, yeah.
It'll still be posted in the individual units?
Yeah. That's the plan, yes. And we'll make sure that happens. Anybody else? I just had a couple of things I wanted to go through. And then we'll get to this as... I've already addressed SOP. I want us to get the SOPs done, get that done before... I think realistic is the November, or get it done before the end of the year. Brad said he's got some final drafts done that we all need to get. And then we can go through that and make sure we don't wanna add anything, take anything away. We make sure we're all up to par on that. I know a lot of y'all have worked hard on that. Let's make sure everything's exactly the way everybody wants it. The other thing I'll be asking Russell to take charge of is the emergency management and our certification along with Brad. See about our meetings and drills and then partnering with the cert group here in the community. I do want us to get... To me, I think we're... Again, I think we're ill-prepared for an emergency, a true emergency. And I'm looking forward to getting that up to where it needs to be. One quick thing, probably y'all can answer. Are we gonna be able to do live broadcast? Live broadcast?
No, other than what we're doing now. I mean, what's...
Well, that comes off afterward, then you post it afterwards.
This live one right now. You would actually have to set up video equipment to do it live.
Okay. Unless we use like a Facebook Live or something.
I guess that's to do that on Facebook.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we get the TVs working?
Again, everything being new, yes, we're gonna tackle that back.
Thank you.
If y'all can...
They were on when we weren't here.
Yeah.
I was in Yellowstone. I was enjoying the hot weather.
Right.
Okay.
I'll let you... We'll just start with you, yes, ma'am.
I've said two things. One, I failed to be able to get on the workshop, but I will hope that everyone will approve the monetary that amount that we'll need for the Halloween event. So, that'll be on our next meeting, which will be in time for the event and everything. But we're gonna have a meeting. It'll be after you guys are here. So, I'll just update you with what we need from you guys for that event this week, Wednesday at five at the park. I have a crew that's ready to help me. So, it's new, fresh blood. So, exciting. And then the second thing was, there's so much debris on our curbs. And I don't...
Actually, in two weeks. It'll be gone by the end. I think they're coming on the sixteen. Couple of months.
They're taking like the palm logs and stuff.
They're taking everything.
Okay. Yeah, they take them. Okay, good. So, I didn't know. We're supposed to be still adding to that.
Yeah, go ahead. Everybody add to it.
Add to it until they're coming through.
Can we make a post?
Yeah, I would say we need to make a post when they're...
We have two weeks to get our stuff all down.
Need to call and put your address in or something? Or they're just gonna drop?
No, this is like the topical...
We got that, we've had the call before.
Well, we actually had it scheduled. On the fall one, yeah. This is the fall one. We actually tried to get it sooner, but everybody in the opposite county is trying to... So, it's...
Busy time.
Yeah. Great, that's all right.
Yeah, great, that's all I had.
Oh, one, one thing to add on your, uh, Halloween thing, or we're doing that in conjunction with national, our national right now, right?
Oh, I wonder.
Cause I think cities only have those, give you chips to raise at Halloween.
What's, what's the date?
Uh, on Halloween, Sunday, Sunday night, yeah.
That's a Sunday, isn't it?
Yeah.
I'm not ready to prepare for something, so I'm sorry about that.
Now?
Okay, uh, now, last quick thing, uh, uh, our citizens, like, got three minutes? Anybody wanna come up and speak, you're wanting to come up? Uh, Bob Sark, this is a gentleman.
Yeah, buddy.
Oh, he didn't leave? Okay, Larry, Larry Brassfield?
That's me.
Yes, sir.
I'm Larry Brassfield, running the one six nine two two Beachcomber. I'd like to address two items on this, uh, number four about the website. I really applaud you for doing something new about the website. I just mentioned that, uh, I was webmaster for a couple of nonprofits for over fifteen years. And I've tried to talk the loopie into this, uh, you need to kinda change the appearance of a website about every s- not, not just this one that you're gonna do, but about every six months to a year, you need to change the appearance of the website because people stop going to it unless you change the appearance of the website. It can have the same content, but the appearance needs to change, just so it's in English French.
Um, I believe we sent in four or five pictures, it could have been more than that, of different shots of the city, so you'll see the background.
And we can constantly, uh...
Change it.
Change it.
That's good, I'm just saying.
Hopefully.
And there'd be so much new information on there constantly, yes.
Cause we're gonna have a community calendar where, you know, you do those things and so, um...
That's great.
I'd even have a volunteer give me some.
Hey, I just put you in that, you're... Yep.
On item six, I'm, it was really has to do with the same stuff and I've learned a lot about, you know, and I was gonna sort of defend Brad a little bit, you know? I've done a lot of pumping also and I've talked to Brad and he actually, before we knew we had to have permits and that sort of thing, he actually volunteered for the city to win another pump so we could do it twice as fast, okay? And it turned out that I got it done fast enough and I let him know we didn't have to rid that of the pump, no effect. So it fits me, I, I'd like to give you just, I did a little research, I lived there for ten years, okay? And I did a little research about before and I'm gonna reference that meeting we had when the GLO was here. Because their original plan for that great burn that they were gonna put out there and the drainage that they were gonna put in was exactly the same drainage that they put in before I, okay? And we told them that didn't work. I have, I have a direct witness input that those drains clogged up within six months and then I wiped them out.
And just on curious, it was because of lack of maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
It was because of lack, and that leads to the next thing I was gonna say. I understand you wanna put, uh, to cut through the dunes and you know the impact they'll have on high tides and surge, storm surge, that sort of thing, so I know you know. But if you cut through the dunes and, and I know several of us have done this too. Before the dune was built up and we were trying to get it to drain, several of us have, you know, really busted our buns out there trying to dig a trench again through there so there's a drain. So if you cut through, I understand that's an emergency, uh, action, but you're gonna have to do regular maintenance on that too.
Correct.
Okay? And so, you know, that's the other thing I wanna make sure of, whatever happens, whether it's a short-term solution or a long-term solution, the city's gotta budget regular maintenance.
And, and I'd like, I'll be the first to say, I apologize for not that, for that not happening. And it will not happen anymore. Once we figure out what we need to do and it's a maintenance issue, we will, it's just like mowing the ditches over there. I mean, it just gotta be one of the things we've been in our operation.
Let me just mention one other thing, that is, uh, I did look at the page by page at the engineering plan for this street reconstruction, for Beachcomber reconstruction. And on page thirty-seven, there's actually a diagram of a drain, okay? And so that made me wonder, are they planning to put a drain in? Now, I know things have changed since you and I talked months ago, but Brad had told me months ago that as part of the reconstruction of Beachcomber, they were gonna put drains in, okay? Now, maybe that's changed and it's not clear on any of the diagrams for Beachcomber or on any of the other streets that those drains are gonna go in. But there is a diagram of a, of a drain on page thirty-seven, okay? So, uh, the only other thing I was gonna say is, is that, uh, I know you know the situation now and it seems like, you know, if you're gonna get permission to cut through, it seems like y'all could get those permits, you know? That's, that's the thing that we're looking for prior to four.
Right.
A short-term solution and a long-term solution.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna have to define the bottom properly.
Yeah, does, I know, uh, several of y'all have mentioned that, you know, it doesn't make sense to, to redo the street, to do the drainage until you've redone the street, but to me, it doesn't make sense not to do them at the same time.
Well, it's, you've got different people doing it and they don't wanna be out there tripping over each other.
I understand that part, but it sounds like, since, since the engineering plan that I was referring to has a diagram of the drain, that the same people that have done a reconstructed street could also put the drains in. They obviously have thought about it, okay?
We'll check it out.
So to me, it doesn't make sense not to do them all at the same time.
There, there hasn't been any change as far as change to our normal plan, so as far as we know, the drains are more not scheduled. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Bob, did you wanna say something?
I did. I just missed that Larry talking, I had to go to the beach and give a birthday present to my grandson. He got a little kayak. But, uh, I've been in Beachcomber for twenty-one years and I've never seen any, Russell's plowed it out a couple of times over there for sure with his little front end motor. But, uh, Sean also dug those big trenches through there, but before that, there was very little done. And us old guys are the ones that have been handling ever too, have been running the pumps and stuff. Right now, the road's full of water and I wear tennis shoes and my wife Marilyn, who just got married this summer, or all of them got married. But we haven't got our houses figured out yet. She lives on one side of the cul-de-sac, I live on the other.
Sounds perfect.
I can walk over there and I can't walk on the road because the road's full of water, it gets my tennis shoes wet.
I take the shoes off, go back.
We need some help, Pam. Big end shovel and a front end loader, something to get the water out of the road.
No power.
If it's, it doesn't need to be, you know, there's something temporary, there's something that will get the water out of the road and it, so y'all get your job done. It's something like you're working on it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir, Bob. Chris, what? Chris, what?
Uh, Ms. Ginger.
I'll do this again. My past gave me flags and little bags and notices and stuff for the flags. And I know you have a lot of them, I've had this done for over a month now, but we canceled the meeting and then I missed the meeting and then I was on vacation. So now I'm going to give her all these flags. There were errors with J B I C and myself did all of this. And she's gonna give us more, so I can work on it during the elections and everybody come vote at Seaside Church.
Thank you, Ginger.
You're welcome. And thanks for having a pound haul meeting. Got the right name now.
Anybody else see anything? Okay, meeting adjourned.